I'd like to call the November 2011 County Commission Meeting to order. First item on the business is we'll hear the invocation from Commissioner Chalafant and the pledge to the flag by Commissioner Beathard. Please stand.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the opportunity of serving our beautiful Williamson County. We know that all things come from thee. Be with us, our Father, as we deliberate the issues and guide our decisions for the majesty of thy holy name. Not unto us, oh Lord, not unto us, but to thy name give glory. In thy son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is roll call. If you'll push your present button. Take the roll.
One absent, Commissioner Arvin Cook absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the October 10, 2011 County Commission meeting, which were mailed to each commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Smith the second.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Ryan. Okay.
On Resolution 10118, I had co-signed that with Commissioner Barnwell. And my name's missing if I may have that added, please.
Any objections to that? I see none. Ms. Anderson, we'll take care of that. If we'll vote on the minutes as amended, if you're in favor, it's on the board, push yes. It's not? Okay. We'll do it by voice vote. If you're in favor of the minutes as presented and as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's pass. Next item's introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes. And each one of those will mail to you. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson, Commissioner Smith the second. If there be no additions to that, I'll voice vote. You ready to vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they pass. Next item, citizens communication. We don't have anybody signed up for that. So moving on, communications and messages. I'd like to thank Deputy George Posse and Deputy Chris Wallace being here in the back and Sheriff Long. Thank you all for being here. Any other communications need to at this time? Commissioner Beathard, you told me before the meeting.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I apologize if there was some misunderstanding. The Resolution 11122, if it's okay, would like, I would like to table that until January. There are two other taxing authorities that wish to look at it and pursuant to some of the recommendations of those in this room, including the mayor, and I agree it should go before those authorities before we decide on it. So I would like to table it until January, if possible.
Resolution 11122, resolution authorizing a property tax exemption for nonprofit community and performing arts organizations in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated section 67-5-223. So it's Resolution 11122. If there are no objections from the other sponsors, we'll pull that. So if I see none from the cosponsors. Okay.
He technically is pulling it for re-filing in January.
He said he used the word table. That's why I.
Yeah, part of semantics here. I think I'd rather choose the word defer to the table.
All right. Dearly noted, so that we will not hear that tonight. And thank you, Commissioner Beathard. Reports of county offices, County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Well, David, it's coming up, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, on your desk are the maps of the individual districts that you have voted on. Those are not approved back from the state yet. Copies were made for each of you for your, for your own review. They will be sent up to the state and they will be sent back down to us with the authorization. But currently, they're still unofficial. David?
Mr. Chairman, we have our standard reports that we'll be making tonight. The first one is the budget report through October the 31st. We also have September included in your packet, which was not available last month in time for the meeting. But both of those look to be in order through the month of October, the four months there, and everything's looking good. We really have not gotten into our revenue collections for property taxes yet, so we should start seeing those in larger numbers in November, December. The privileged tax report for the month of October, we had a very good spike upward on that. If you look at the chart that we've been giving you that accompanies that report, this is the best October that we've had in five years. We keep looking for that trend. We'll have a good month or two, and it seems like we slipped back a little bit, but we're certainly encouraged by the month of October and hope that will be a beginning of a trend. And then the final report is that of the Cool Springs Conference Center. We did not have that report last month. It came in the day after the meeting. So we have September and October. Both were very good months. September, we received a check for a little over forty-two thousand. And this month, a check a little over fifty-five, almost fifty-six thousand dollars. So both of those were good reports from the conference center. Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David.
Mr. Chairman, one final thing, and then I'll step down. For those that had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day, 11/11/11, at 11:00, we say thank you to Burt for arranging the flyover of the two C-130s, to WAKM for their continued sponsor, and to all of the businesses that contributed to that and individuals to probably, in my opinion, to have one of the largest and best crowds on a beautiful day. And so I say thank you to all those that made it happen. I'll entertain any questions, Jack.
Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner Chalafant?
No questions, but we've got the flower for next year already booked.
Great. I think next year's a leap year, and I think that might be a challenge. We're going to have to figure out something. Is it going to be on Sunday, or Saturday, or Monday? So it is a leap year.
Any other questions for the mayor? I see none. Thank you, sir. Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
With the mayor's comments, I'll be glad to leap out of one of those planes in the process. Thank you for having me tonight. A lot of things happening in the district. We're making lots of good forward progress. We do have two resolutions for your consideration tonight. Certainly request that you look on those favorably. I'd like to just call your attention to a matter that I've been working on, that I think is pertinent to this community in a tremendous way, and that is the current set of affairs as it relates to teacher evaluations. I've submitted an open letter to the editor, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to notify you in a public setting, what is at stake, what's at issue. The state has adopted a new evaluation system that has two parts. The first part being that the principal or assistant principal goes into the classroom and observes teacher conduct in the form of teaching. The second part is that of taking student evaluation results, and those student evaluation results comprise 50% of the teacher's evaluation. The challenging part for our teachers and what has created so much unrest is the 50% that relates to student achievement does not necessarily relate to the students that they're actually teaching, and in fact, may have not ever taught. As an example, first grade teachers are evaluated on third grade student performance. They may or may not have taught those third grade students when they were in first grade. So there's this huge chasm in this unwieldy amount of concern and frustration on behalf of the teachers in Williamson County as it relates to the evaluation process. I'm using this pulpit tonight to notify you of that, and I am trying to do so in a very aggressive and concerted way with all of the stakeholders to hopefully compel the decision makers to listen to the voices of the educators in Williamson County and to try to adjust the evaluation system in an appropriate way. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Looney? Commissioner Wilson?
I wanted to make a comment, and also to tell you how much I thank the school board for following through with Club Croft Elementary. It has been, it's a narrow road. It has had its different problems, but I think you have followed through, and the residents out there appreciate. We've got the school signs up. In fact, more signs than we probably need. But anyway, safety factor is much better, and I'd like to appreciate and thank the school board for following up. And we have a red light there now at Wilson Pike at Club Croft, and it's been paved and lined and, you know, all that. So I do appreciate.
Yes, ma'am. It's a fine, fine facility and a fine project. We will be exploring additional signage and crosswalks in the rest of our facilities in the months to come. And obviously, that will include a conversation with you because those things end up costing money. So thank you for your comments.
Any other, Commissioner Brockman?
Given the fact that there is this concern on behalf of the teachers, not just in Williamson County, but possibly across the state, this input that they are receiving, when will they be looking at it in terms of a reevaluation of this evaluation process? Will it, could it happen this year or not?
Yes, ma'am. There are two parallel tracks at work. One, obviously, is with the Commissioner of Education and the State Board of Education. I testified to the State Board, I think, two weeks ago today. So we're working on that end. And then, obviously, we are also meeting with our legislators, specifically the delegation that represents Williamson County, and asking them for their assistance in taking some legislative acts. Another challenge to the evaluation system is the student test results will not come in until around July. As you might well know, that's well after the teachers go home for the school year. So we have, we're going to have to call them back in at some point in time to finish their evaluation, which is problematic from lots of fronts.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Looney?
Dr. Looney, would you share with the full commission what you share with the education committee, how much this is costing Williamson County, the evaluation process?
If I can do so in writing, I don't have a number in front of me tonight, but I'll be glad to furnish, furnish some information in writing. This, in many ways, is another unfunded mandate. You graciously approved us hiring some additional assistant principals this year. Without those individuals, we couldn't even get the evaluations done. But there, there are a lot of, there's a lot of time and resource and effort and taxpayers' money being utilized to complete these evaluations. And it's not that the teachers don't want to be held accountable or evaluated to a person. They all tell me they do. They just simply want a fair evaluation. And it's our argument that the process currently isn't as fair as it needs to be.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Looney. Any other reports? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
As Chair of the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Williamson County, we'd like to let everybody know about a great announcement we had several weeks ago about, about the work of our CBB and its impact on Williamson County. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I would appreciate if you would let Mark Shore.
Sure.
Of our executive director of our Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau to come forward.
Sure. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mark Shore. I'm the Executive Director of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau, having been in that position since early 2008. In September of 2006, Mayor Anderson shared his vision with a newly appointed 26-member Tourism Task Force that Williamson County will have the best tourism development program in the state of Tennessee. Tonight, I'm here to bring you some exciting news that Williamson County is steadily and aggressively moving towards making that vision a reality. In 2008, we were number eight in Tennessee for expenditures made by visitors. In 2009, we were seventh. And for 2010, we were recently announced as number six in tourism spending out of Tennessee's 95 counties. What does number six in visitor spending mean for you? $295 million were spent in Williamson County by our visitors. We also like to call them temporary taxpayers. Number six also means that 2,550 jobs exist in Williamson County because of tourism. And number six means that the average Williamson County household saved $352 in state and local taxes last year, thanks to our visitors. Your Convention and Visitors Bureau is also growing in efficiency, making these dollars that are reinvested in tourism yield larger results each year. In 2008, your return on investment was six to one for the dollars you provided the Convention and Visitors Bureau for tourism marketing. In 2009, your return on investment was eight to one. And in 2010, your return on investment with direct spending was 10 to one for the dollars you invested. In those same three years, the private sector has seen our successes as well, and they have quadrupled the amount of money they invest in our partnership opportunities. I realize that Jan, in, starting in January, you'll begin the new challenge and task of working on the next budget. To sustain and grow this vital part of our economy, I would ask that the county reinvest 25% of the lodging taxes collected, just as this commission did in 2007, at the recommendation of the mayor's task force on tourism. The CBB was restructured at the recommendation of the Tourism Task Force as a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit. And this has increased our efficiency and our ability to build partnerships. But we are first and foremost a revenue generator for this county, and we have consistently demonstrated our effectiveness. I'd like to close with the opening line from the November 1 article in the Tennessean written by Josh Adams titled, "Tourists Plop Down 295 Million in Williamson County." Believe it or not, after camping in the Smoky Mountains, feeling the blues on Beale Street, and two-stepping the honky-tonks of Broadway, visitors to the volunteer state are probably headed to Williamson County. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'd also like to call attention to a video that was running prior to our meeting, and I hope everybody got a chance to see that. Is that on a website somewhere?
It is. If folks will go to visitwilliamson.com, at the bottom of that homepage is a link to the video. You'll see the calculator for the, for the video, but visitwilliamson.com. Thank you.
Moving on. Next item on the agenda is elections and appointments. We have two terms on the Beer Board. One, the Southwest Section Representative Term expiring Dewey Garland, and nomination is Dewey Garland. Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Hester. Is this voice vote? Yes. All in favor of Mr. Garland, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And his nomination passes. Northwest Section Representative Term expiring Preston Goff, nomination Preston Goff.
So moved.
Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Little the second. All in favor of Mr. Goff, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Goff is confirmed. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson, Commissioner Hayes the second, and it's on the machine. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, push the yes button.
State a conflict. I have a relative that is on the notary renewal, and it's my sister, and I will vote no.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Lemon. If you're ready to vote, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everyone wishing to vote? If you wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Consent agenda passes. Moving on to new business, Resolution 111116, Resolution of Williamson County Board of Commissioners to endorse the Leapers Fork Village Special Area Plan. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hancock.
What about the no?
That was on the consent.
Consent agenda.
Commissioner Hancock moved. Do I have a second?
Second, Hester.
Commissioner Hester. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock. Well, let's see. Planning Commission was eight-four-zero against. And explanation, Commissioner Hancock.
The chairman of this department has a plan to develop a zoning area that will fit in with the lifestyle and current lifestyle and future lifestyle of places like Leapers Fork, and this one in particular is Leapers Fork. It was about 16 months in the making, and the process was, was great. Had community participation. And we look forward to this enabling that community to, to continue to increase the tax revenues for the unincorporated areas of the county. I encourage everyone to support it.
Commissioner Hester, do you have follow-up with that, your coach?
I just wanted to thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank our planning department for doing this excellent coordination and these photographs. And I would like to thank the citizens of Leapers Fork, Hillsborough. They gave us a lot of input into this plan. And the committee who worked on this information did a fine job, spent a lot of hours in developing it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Mike Madison. Mike's with the Planning Department. And if you'd come up, Mike, and any, any input would be appreciated.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I know you received a copy of the plan and your agenda materials, and so I won't really talk about the plan itself. But I do want to take just a minute to mention that throughout the planning process, we worked very closely with the Citizens Advisory Committee. It was comprised of business owners and residents and property owners and other stakeholders within the village. Commissioner Hancock and Commissioner Hester both participated on that committee, and we really appreciate the, their involvement and support on this. The Citizens Advisory Committee played a very important role in the development of the plan. They served as an excellent sounding board on issues. They helped to reconcile different points of view that we heard. And they, and they really helped to ensure that the plan reflected the values of the community, which I think was very important. In addition to Commissioners Hancock and Hester, the Citizens Advisory Committee members include Catherine Anderson, Mark Cantrell, Cindy Garvey, Holly Givens, Tom Herring, Pam Hood, Shannon Martin, Aubrey Preston, Rob Robinson, and Deborah Warnock. We really appreciate the, the hard work that those folks put in and, and all their time and effort. And other commission members attended some of those public meetings, and, and it was a good process, as Commissioner Hancock said. Also, just real quickly, also echoing what, what was said by the Commissioners, public participation was very important to us in this. And we feel like the, the plan is really centered around the public input that we received during the process. At their October meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to adopt the plan, and they also voted unanimously to recommend that you all approve this resolution endorsing the plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. It's loaded on the machine. Any other discussion? I see none. If you're ready to vote, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution passes. Appropriations, Resolution 11113, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-2012 Sheriff's Department budget by $49,300, revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson. Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jack. This is a, this comes from state grant funds. It's $49,300. It's to be utilized for these sobriety checkpoints that they have and, and for, they've been coordinated through the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Any discussion? I see none. I'd like to recognize Deputy George Posse back here. Deputy Posse is the one that's kind of spearheading this, and he's, appreciate that, George.
They now have a trailer that has two cells in it that they can actually lock people up on the side of the road.
Well, I hope I never see that. I guess we need to vote. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11114, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-2012 Sheriff's Department budget by $10,000, revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Again, this is from state grant funds. Again, it comes from the Department of Transportation, Governor's Highway Safety Office, and it's to use for training, for reduced speeding, to increase skills, and for education network opportunities law enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 11114, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1115, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 capital project budgets by $30,000 to transfer existing homeland security budgets by $30,000 to transfer existing Homeland Security Grant Funds from capital expenses to the County General Fund Office of Public Safety. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman II. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This funds is going to pay for part-time personnel. It originally came from the $516,561 that was approved for Homeland Security Grant, but it is allowed to be used for what it's being transferred for.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 11115, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11117, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 General Sessions Budget by $1,410, revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman II. Law Enforcement Committee meeting?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is the increased cost of drug testing that's done by the courts. I was saying, the drug testing there is done by the General Sessions, people at the courthouse. Circuit Court also uses those drug testing facilities also, and I think I've asked Bobby to possibly check into, should the state bear any cost of this, because the circuit judges, which are state employees, request these drug tests. So, if they request them, should the state donate to that? So, Bobby's going to be looking into that.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote, Resolution 11117, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111110, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Animal Control Budget by $384.63, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Wilson?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes II. Public Health Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, we received some items from an estate, and these items were sold for a sum of $384.63 when we had our Williamson County Public Auction on October 1st. So, this is the proceeds to go to our animal control budget.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote, on 111110, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111111, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a contract agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health in appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Animal Control Budget by $1,400. Commissioner Wilson?
Move for approval.
Mr. Hayes II. Public Health Committee?
Six-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
We have, this is the item that we, to vote on is to do with animal control friendly grant, animal friendly grant, sorry. There is a, an amendment that you will see by your desk that just the revised revenue account number should be TO101 dot four-six-nine-eight oh dot oh-three-seven. That is the only change, is the way that that revenue is listed. And basically, these are funds that will provide low-cost sterilization for the dogs and the cats, and the amount is $1,400.
All right, proper motion. Do I have a second on the amendment? Commissioner Williams II. Is the amendment loaded, Linda? All right, if you're in favor, Commissioner Hayes?
It's not about the amendment.
Okay, well, we'll, let's vote on that, and we'll come back to you. If you're in favor of amending Resolution 111111, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
All right, back to the main resolution as amended. Commissioner Hayes?
I just wanted to emphasize that these funds are from the animal-friendly license plates that people can buy, the additional license plates, and it's prorated by the different counties. If we don't accept it, then it will go to other counties, so we certainly want to take advantage of what is Dewey's.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote on 111111 as amended, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes as amended. Resolution 111112, resolution amending the 2011-2012 General Purpose School Budget, $260,586.94 for S.P.E.D. bus purchases from additional state revenue.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, second. School Board, eleven yes, zero no. Education?
Five, yes. Zero, no.
Thank you. Budget?
Five, yes. Zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is some extra state revenue money, and we'll be able to use this for three special ed-bus replacements.
Very good. Any questions? Linda, you've got amend on there. Is there amendment? Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Reddick. If you're in favor of 111112, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111113, resolution appropriating in the General Purpose School 2011-12 Budget, $12,742, additional federal-state funds for instruction for the Board's Adult Education Program. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Little II. School Board, eleven yes, zero no. Education?
Five, yes. Zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, yes. Zero, no.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
There will be no additional local funds here. These are funds that we can use to, from additional federal and state funds, to fund this program.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote on 111113, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111117, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Parks and Recreation Budget by $27,371.50, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Green?
I move for approval.
Mr. Wilson II. Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec voted five-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Department received these funds to offset the expenses for hiring umpires and supervisors and scheduling at the various parks and the youth softball league.
All right, any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 111117, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111118, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Parks and Rec Budget by $1,700, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes II. Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec, five-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yeah, these are funds received to offset the expenses of the Parks and Rec's annual haunted trails and the touch truck, which I understand was very successful and noisy.
Any questions? I see none. If you're ready to vote, 111118, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution 111119, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Parks and Recreation Budget by $1,000, revenues to come from donation. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little II. Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec is five-four-zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
These are funds received for $1,000 to offset the expenses of hosting the Parks and Rec's annual crafts bazaar and car show, which they had at the Yank Park just recently.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of 111119, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111120, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 Library Budget by $12,000, revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Mr. Green II. Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Library Board of Directors?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, the friends of the library in Williamson County is very, very nice to us, and they have book sales periodically, and this is their donation based on one of their most recent book sales.
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that the next book sale will be this week, actually, and this is a great opportunity to do some Christmas shopping for those on your list who enjoy books. It's from Wednesday until Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote on 111120? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111121, a resolution to provide funding in the amount of $8,962 for a traffic signal feasibility study in order to establish an estimated cost for the signalization of Lewisburg Pike, State Route 106, and Henpeck Lane. Commissioner Bain?
Move for approval. Second.
Commissioner Bryan, the second. Highway Commission, five-four-zero against a table until January. Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
I see Joe back there. Joe, this is your fifteen minutes of fame. Why don't you explain this? Don't look at the clock. Three minutes.
One minute, Bill. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came to us about three months ago where we had a request. We received word from the State of Tennessee that a citizen had requested a warrant study at the intersection of Henpeck Lane and Lewisburg Pike. The finding was that the State of Tennessee said that would be an excellent place for a traffic signal if the County of Williamson would be willing to design it, construct it, and maintain it. With that set of facts, we felt like we needed to do additional study into that, and what we have suggested after discussing this with the County Mayor, the Highway Superintendent, the County Engineer, is we'd like to use some funds in the traffic shed for that particular area to go out, take a look at that signal, develop an idea as to what that signalization might cost. Generally speaking, I would say this, I would say chances are it'll be something in the range of six figures. However, without any knowledge of what we might run into as far as utilities, utilities, turn lane improvements and alike, we felt like that wasn't a particularly prudent thing to do without additional study. Moreover, we are a little bit concerned also from a policy standpoint, and I'm getting close to my minute, that there are a number of intersections in the unincorporated county that would probably have a similar set of facts, and we simply wanted to use this also as an opportunity to start working with community development and the County Highway Department on developing some policies when we are approached with this, rather than just say we're going to or we're not going to. Is that?
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Horn? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor of 111121, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111123, resolution appropriating and amending the 2011-12 County Trustees' Budget by $23,000, revenues to come from unappropriated County General Funds. Commissioner Bain?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, is it second? Budget Committee?
Five-four-zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bain?
Is Joey still here? Did he leave?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, he did. They haven't had software update in about fifteen years, so that's what it boils down to.
That's exactly what it boils down to. I came in, we had software installed, 1994. We have not had a full update on that, and I'm proud to say that local government corporation in Columbia is our software vendor, and they have chosen our office to design that software. The developer that they've contracted, contracted with to do that lives out west Main Street, so mine, your trustees' offices helped design everything in our state. Any other questions?
Any questions? Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, while you're there, I'm just wondering why this is not a regular budget item. I mean, after fifteen years, I would think we could foresee a need for software somewhere along the way. Could this wait till next year, or should it have been anticipated in this year's budget?
Well, that's a question that would be hard for me to answer. We always, if you want me to carry that in the budget every year, I'd be glad to do that, sir, so that we'd have that in case we need it, but we don't need it that often, and I don't see having to ask for it unless I don't need it. I would rather not wait till next year. No, sir. We need it now. We hope to have that installed by December.
Mr. Davis, will that help on collecting this year's taxes?
No, sir, will not help collect the taxes. It makes us much more efficient. I'm proud to stand here and tell you that since 1994, we've increased from about 40,000 parcels to almost 90,000 this year, and where we used to use five or six people to collect taxes, we now actually only use about three people to actually process taxes. Rest of those are doing other duties, such one is bankruptcies and also doing our tax relief. We have three people now full-time do tax relief. So, by modernization, by software, by being aggressive and going out, and I'm proud to say that the banking community in Williamson County is very good with us, we're able to offer mine, your customers, including our office, about 55 locations that they can pay their taxes. The only one you pay money for is this right here. Those other locations, the bank do that as a service for their customers. And because of our software, we're able to use a micro line on our tax bills. Our contracted bank last year processed 26,000 checks for us, about $27 million that you and I did not pay any money for to have it processed. And that's what the software does for us, Commissioner Davis. It helps us move one step further to being completely automated. I see the day when we will have our own in-house processing. I've been to other offices, and we're not near that big yet, but Shelby County does everything in-house with their own scanners, solders, everything. We're a long ways from that, though.
Follow-up, Commissioner Davis?
I was just wondering about, it's, I don't mind the software. I mean, we need to upgrade from time to time. That's not it. It's the budget process that concerns me. And we're asking other folks not to come forward and ask for money mid-year, ask us in July, when we normally approve it. And this looks like to me something that we could plan for.
You also, pardon me if I may answer that question. You asked us to perform a zero increase in our budget, and that's what we complied with. You asked us to report a zero increase in our budget, and that's what we complied with.
Commissioner Ford?
Mr. Davis? I appreciate the work that you and your office do and how efficient you've become. Let me ask a couple of questions about this, being in the software business. Is this a one-time fee that you're, that you're asking for? Is there an ongoing maintenance fee that's associated with this?
Part of that will be an ongoing maintenance fee. The rest of it's a one-time fee. The part in there for, for the hardware, we're hoping you save a lot of money. Perry, Mr. Perry says he can buy it for us a lot cheaper than it's in there. Obviously, we'll only spend the money we need.
Okay. And this includes all the installation and everything else of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
And also, while I'm here, and I've got the floor, and I have more than 15 minutes, I think, I would report to you in the Grass and Sewer Project that that software is supposed to be installed this week or next week for us to be able to collect those sewer fees also.
Very good. Commissioner Hancock?
Call a question.
Question's been called, second, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Williams, like, hard to hear up here sometimes. All in favor of calling the questions, question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so you're ready to vote? Ready to vote on 111123? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11111, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a water service agreement with Nolansville College Grove Utility District of Williamson County. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Little, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec voted four, four, zero against.
Property Committee?
I see, five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, we have under construction on Osborne, on McCandless Road, a soccer facility called Osborne Park. We've come to the point where we need water, and we're going to contract with Nolansville College Grove Utility District to provide that water. They will accept the, and maintain it for the first year after the completion, and we will be responsible for it. So it's a chance to move forward and get that park up and running.
All right. Questions, Mr. Barnwell?
Yes, the, it says we will install the water system. Is that part of the capital project of building the soccer fields? Are there just going to be extra money we're going to be?
No, this is part of the capital project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Resolution 11111, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11112, resolution accepting donation of equipment from Ms. Julia Robison to the sheriff's department. Mr. Williams?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Little, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a donation of $3,750 for 10 lightweight multi-hit rifle plates for the SWAT team. These are the plates that they're able to put in their vests, and which are, makes, according to the sheriff, it's about 30 pounds lighter than the normal, the normal vest.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Resolution 11112, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11116, resolution to amend Resolution 109610 to increase the copayment for health care and prescriptions provided to inmates. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval.
Second. Mr. Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six, four, zero against.
Purchasing and insurance?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, there was, since there was an article in the paper today about this, and I read some of the comments, let me explain the background as I could. The last time this was amended was 1996. It has to do with the copay of the inmates and how much they're going to pay. And right now, we're, we are proposing through this resolution that a visit for medical services would be $25 per visit, and the amount for prescription pharmacy would be $10 per visit. This was heavily debated by, in the law enforcement committee. It went, it took two months to get through the law enforcement committee. These figures were not just pulled out of the air. They were substantially equal to what a county employee would have to pay if they were going to get the same medical services through a pharmacy and through a, to visit the doctor. Now, I have a nurse on staff that's contracted out. Captain Dobbin's here, is here tonight to answer any questions. I'm trying to shorten that question process back, filling you in as best I can. One of the things they ran into was people would pay $5 to get out to go see the nurse just to get out of the cell. $25 is a different issue. They are allowed $60 a week through commissary, and that's what they're allowed to pay, and this is taken from their commissary. There are no indigent people being punished by this because they were still allowed medical care that has to be provided by both state and federal law. But this does provide, recoup some of the cost that's out there. I know the amount was, the amount was an issue, it was a big issue with the law enforcement committee, and it, we, I chaired the purchase and insurance committee and went through there, and I explained the same thing to them. So that's the purpose of this, it's, it's to bring up, and again, Captain Dobbin's here, if anybody has any questions about that.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Follow-up on Commissioner Williams' comments. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that in addition to cutting down on the frivolous visits, I had the opportunity, had the honor of being to, had the opportunity to visit the jail, and the deputies commented regarding Commissioner Williams' point is that the frivolous visits are definitely an issue. It's a logistical nightmare, especially if you have a female inmate back there and a male inmate. In addition to that, this is something that the county is very much upside down in, even with these increases to reflect what frankly, law-abiding, contributing members of society are paying, 25, 15, even though it's reflected here as $10. Even with these increases, the county, the sheriff's office will still be upside down in costs regarding the health care that's provided to these inmates. And so, to me personally, I would ask for your, your support in this. It's going to require a two-thirds majority vote, if I understand correctly, but it's something that, to me, seems inherently wrong if we don't ask inmates to pay what law-abiding, contributing members of society are paying. Thank you.
Captain Dobbin, you?
Welcome, sir. Thank you. Just to echo a little bit what Commissioner Williams stated, we're looking to go to $25 for the sick call and up from $1.50 to five, or $10 on the pharmacy. We currently have about, through calendar year this year, we, we've collected $6,000 in copays for pharmacy and about $4,400 in sick call. That would dramatically increase to $22,000 and $40,000. When you're dealing with a $614,000 line item, you're really looking at less than 4% or 3.6% of the monies being reimbursed, if you will. I'll take any questions you may have.
Commissioner Shalfont?
This is not for, does not have anything to do with Captain Dobbin's.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Tanner?
What do they typically purchase with that, with that commissary fund?
Commissary, we don't accept packages in, into the jail for security reasons, so it can be anywhere from t-shirts to candy bars. So we limit it to $60 so that we can control how much food is back there, candy bars and sodas, if you will.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, just a comment that I had talked to Captain Dobbin about, and, and I think it's important to mention that in the third whereas, it says that it is the intent of the Board of Commissioners to raise the copay that inmates will pay, reflecting to the amount paid that is substantially equivalent to the amounts paid by county employees. Also, the fourth whereas talks about the cost of health care. Everyone in this, everyone has seen the cost of health care go up, and that was probably something that led me to believe that that increase was needed, because I know how things, you know, come about. No one has turned away from this program, and that's-
Definitely not.
No one's turned away, and they will work, you know, with, with that inmate to make sure that they are given medicines and appropriate things, but generics are used.
That's correct.
And, and they will file, if they have a ten care or have some other form of insurance that is applicable, they'll file that form. So I thought that was just important to mention.
Thank you. Mr. Shalfont?
Can I call a question?
Second.
Question, all in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Captain Dobbin. Question's been called, so you ready to vote? Resolution 11116, if, and this does take two-thirds vote to pass. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111115, resolution approving the terms of the sale of real property owned by Williamson County to the city of Franklin and authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute all documents to complete the transaction. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second. Mr. Williams, the second. Property Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, this is a very small piece of property that's in front of the Clay senior citizens, and the city of Franklin is on a road project. It needs to buy that in order to complete that project.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote on 111115? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111124, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a project agreement with the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Commissioner Bane?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Bane?
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with TDOT for grant funds for regional transportation.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? 111124, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. That was the, concludes the resolutions. If there's no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Williams? Thank you. Y'all have a safe holiday, and we'll see you back in January.
Happy New Year.